And we'll call the school board meeting to order. Mr. Corpenning, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Wherever it is.
Around the corner here, I think.
Okay. All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Ms. Borne, if you'd take the role. And I just wanted to say that Maureen Reardon could not be here tonight because she's ill, so we'll miss her and wish her well. Do we have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I will motion that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the agenda be adopted as written. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, announcements, and I'll read these. There will be a building committee meeting Thursday, April 24th at 8:30 a.m. in the school administration conference room. Chairman's night will be Monday, April 28th at 5:00 p.m. at the school administration conference room. And there will be a special school board meeting and work session Monday, April 28th at 6:00 p.m. in the school administration conference room when the FY '15 budget will be adopted. There will be a health advisory committee meeting Wednesday, May 7th at 8:00 a.m. in the central complex building conference room. There will be a special education advisory committee meeting Wednesday, May 7th at 5:00 p.m. in the central complex building A conference room. And there's a change here on this next one. There will be a school support council meeting Thursday, May 29th at 7:00 p.m. in the school administration conference room. And there will be a personnel committee meeting Thursday, May 8th at 8:00 a.m. in the school administration conference room. And there will be a finance committee meeting Thursday, May 8th at 5:00 p.m. in the school administration conference room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, May 12th at 7:00 p.m. in this room, the FHS Falcon Room. And I don't believe there's any response to citizens' time from any previous meeting. So is anybody signed up to speak for this meeting? Is anybody? I don't believe there is. Did anybody want to say anything?
What?
Okay, let's let her get it, just in case. We have this shy person that's... Okay, great. So no one wants to speak, is that right? Okay, all right. So board reports. Mr. Gorg.
We just had our finance committee and personnel committee meeting. Beyond that, we had a wonderful presentation at our last school health advisory board meeting that was a little bit disconcerting about the drug use increase across the country and even here in Falkirk County. So we did have a presentation about that. Nothing came out of it so far, but it's very interesting, something we should make sure we keep our eyes open for.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I will, I'd like to bring you all up to date on what's going on in the Mountain Business Governor's School. Of course, right now they're on spring break. A couple of interesting symposiums are coming up this month. On April the 29th, there will be a senior research symposium here at the Warrenton campus of Lloyd Fairfax for the Mountain Business Governor's School. And on April the 30th, the senior research symposium will be up at the Middletown campus. So if anybody can make it at any of these two events, I think you will be very, very pleased and happy with what you see there. Let's see. Also, at this time, I would like to extend an invitation to my entire board to visit the Mountain Business Governor's School on a little tour. And I will be sending out some dates here very shortly, probably next week, to see what dates are good for you all, morning, afternoon, whatever the case may be. And I would like for the board and any of the staff administrators who would love to be there as well to tour, to take that tour, okay?
That'd be great.
Good. Make it morning.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Friday.
It'll be a morning. Tuesday, I'm hearing Tuesdays, I'm hearing mornings and all that stuff, so we're gone once, gone twice.
[laughing]
Okay, we'll try to set up on something like Tuesday in the morning, okay?
That would be great. Okay.
Good.
Ms. Grove?
Building report is here, and other than that, I don't have anything, I don't think. It's been a quiet few weeks.
It has been, thank you.
Yay. Dr. Jack?
I just wanted to mention that Dr. Mitchell and I and Jane Grove, the math supervisor, we've spent some time with each of the math teachers, groups of math teachers at the five middle schools, and talking about the plan or the implementation of increasing the percentages of eighth graders, middle school students taking and completing Algebra I. And this, again, this is just another way to move the school division forward, particularly if there's any kind of focus on STEM, it's got to include math and kids who have the ability to take and be successful in higher level math courses. And in order to get there and increase that number, we need to start, really in elementary, but primarily in middle school, by increasing the number of kids taking Algebra I and geometry. So, and I think those conversations have gone over extremely well. And there's nervousness and trepidation because it's new, but it's important. And we have some energized folks, for sure. We're not... Every school has sort of a different approach to it, a different plan. I think that's fair to say, Dr. Mitchell. One kind of looks at it differently. And I don't think there's a number where we're trying to reach a certain number, but we do know that we're missing some kids. And so if we even increase that number marginally and move towards greater participation, you know, we can do that now. And then, and again, start with some of those pre-algebra skills perhaps in fifth and sixth grade and better prepare kids to be successful. But in the meantime, we need to identify kids now, potentially for next year, who may not have been selected for Algebra I but who are ready and able to be successful in Algebra I. And I think that's been the biggest benefit of these meetings. So thanks to the teachers, thanks Jane, Dr. Mitchell, this meeting's been very productive.
That's great. The only thing I just wanted to say is we're nearing the end of the budget season, which has really been a lot of work on a lot of different people. And I really want to thank the members of the Board of Supervisors and Paul McCullough for working closely with us, with our one-on-one meetings with them, to really tell them where we were going. But in particular, I really want to thank this board, everybody on the board that worked hard to talk to your member of the Board of Supervisors, but especially Dr. Jack and Dr. Mitchell, who took the time to meet with each member. And the person that I really want to thank here, though, is Marcy Kotoff. Without you, we couldn't have made the headway that we did this year. And it really, since 2008, I think it was the best budget process that I've felt that we've done. So thank you all very much, it was great. Okay, so we got the financial management report.
Great segue.
Yes.
You have before you the financial management report as of February, the end of February, that we're eight months through the year. Every, our expenditures and revenues are in line with last year. We're actually a little ahead with collecting or get the reimbursement for our federal revenues, so that's nice. And I will say, we're currently in the process of calculating our average daily membership, which is going to tell us exactly how much state funding we'll be getting. It's based on March 31st, and we'll be submitting it to the state in the next week or two. So then we'll really have a strong view of where we're going to be at year end.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Human Resource Department report.
Good evening. The following report is from Human Resources Department for the month of March. Currently, you will see that we are beginning to recruit for our vacancies for the 2014-2015 school year. We have 10 vacancies in certified staff. And on Thursday and Friday last week, we had close to 15 certified employees come in to discuss retirement options. So I do know that number will increase. Since we're talking retirement, our retirement dinner is scheduled for June 2nd, which is the first Monday in June at 5:00 p.m. I hope to have a location for you all shortly. We have it tentatively scheduled at Liberty High School, but we're also looking at other alternative sites. And then for classified vacancies, currently we have 12 that we're beginning to recruit for for the 2014 school year. Any questions this evening?
Okay, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I motion that the school board approve the following: the minutes of the March 10th school board meeting, March 13th joint work session, and the March 24th school board work session, the monthly bills and payroll, and personnel actions.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that we approve the minutes of the March 10th school board meeting, the March 13th joint work session, and the March 24th school board meeting, or school board work session, monthly bills and payroll, and personnel actions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, now we move on to information items, the revisions to policy 5-6.4.
You should have just stayed right there.
I should have stayed here. I guess I needed the extra step. Good evening. The following is request to revise policy 5-6.4 grievances and grievance procedures for teachers. The Virginia Department of Education recently approved revisions to regulation of grievance process on February 27th, 2014. However, they are currently working their way through the regulatory process and have not yet been published. Therefore, the school division's attorney cannot find a definitive timeline for the publication of the revised regulation and recommends that we delete the current regulation that we have and that we revise the policy as follows to follow the Code of Virginia, because the Code of Virginia does have a grievance standards. The revision regulation updated the time required for notice throughout the process in accordance to the Virginia Code. The regulation allows a teacher to request a hearing in front of the school board, then the board decides whether they would like to hear the hearing themselves or appoint a hearing officer. Then, when the new procedure is adopted by the state, the board then will reestablish the regulation. So attached is the revised policy. The regulation's also attached because we're removing that. So the revision will have no longer a regulation attached. I am requesting that tonight we move this to action so that we can put it in place. Any questions?
Madam Chair, given the fact that we have discussed this extensively in our previous meeting, I would like to go ahead and motion that we move on to move it to action for tonight. Therefore, I propose that the school board move information item 10A to action item 11A for consideration for approval this evening and renumber the remaining agenda items accordingly.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board move information item number 10A to action item number 11A for consideration and approval this evening and renumber the remaining items accordingly. Is there any discussion? The only thing I wanted to just mention in our meeting that we had previous to this, employees will have access to the state regulations. So if somebody did file a grievance in the interim, they would have access to all the materials. So, and that was important. Other than that, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay, great. Special education annual plan, Mr. Corpenning.
Good evening. Not much has changed since last year. It's pretty much the same dollar amounts that we are guesstimating. Remember, this is flow-through money from the federal government. We won't know the exact amount until that money's been divvied up among the states. Do you have any questions? I believe it was sent to you electronically.
Right.
Right. No, and you answered the one that I had about what the difference was. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? No. Okay, great, thank you. Pre-Labor Day waiver. Ms. Borne.
As you know, the Code of Virginia requires public schools to open after Labor Day unless a waiver is issued by the Board of Education for good cause. Under the code, the waiver may be granted for causes such as prior year closings for severe weather. To qualify for this waiver, the school division must have closed an average of eight days per year for five of the past 10 years. I realize you know this, but I want to be sure everybody knows.
Right. No, no, that's good.
In school years 2007, 2010, 2011, 2013, and 2014, the school division was closed a total of 58 days, which are our high five years, or an average of 11.6 days per year, which exceeds the requirements under the Code of Virginia. So tonight, I'm informing you that for next school year, we qualify for the waiver and we can open prior to Labor Day. Any questions?
No. Excuse me.
Is the waiver business somehow tied in with the budget? Because in some of that daily news that we get, there was an article about, and I wish I remember, the school division that was having to adopt two calendars because they weren't getting, they didn't know if they were going to get their waiver? It didn't...
No.
Did you read that?
Well, it could have been tied to the King's Dominion law. I mean, that law is challenged every single year.
It is.
Well, maybe that's what it was about. That's what it was about.
Because it is challenged every year.
And it failed again, so...
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could be like Fairfax.
I know it's a surprise that we did.
Yeah, oh, a big surprise after 17 days.
We could be like Fairfax, and what are they going to get out the 25th? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, school board recommended FY '15 budget. Dr. Jack?
That's me.
That is you.
I've got help from Mr. McDonald. How you want to do this, Louis? Some kind of signal to me? Let's talk about local support first. We'll go to that slide now. There it is. So this is just a recap, and again, it's information only, most of this or all of it you've seen. The total request was for 5.1 million new dollars, new local dollars. What was appropriated was 2.4 million dollars or a 3.1 percent increase. So the 2.4 percent, 2.4 million equaled about 47 percent of our overall request. So we got roughly half of what we requested from the locality. Go on to the next slide now. In terms of available funding, this is sort of, this is the way it panned out. The county administrator's proposal, Paul, Mr. McCullough, recommended about $300,000 in addition to the 1.7 million. The 1.7, as you remember, was what was needed to sort of do tomorrow what we're doing today. Mr. McCullough recommended an additional $300,000 on top of the 1.7. And the Board of Supervisors allocated $420,000 on top of Mr. McCullough's request with the condition that the $420,000 be used to address the compression issue in the budget. In addition to that, we also are going to be recommending tonight that we reduce contingency. We don't have an official contingency line, but we do have breakage from retirees. And we have official retirements from about 15 employees. So what we're going to be requesting tonight is that we capture some of that money and use it for additional positions and a few expenditures into next year. Other expenditure reductions, the $50,000, those were things that, some items that we reduced in substitute line, I think a tech support line. So there was a little bit of savings there. And then the revenue adjustment, $35,000, I believe, an E-rate savings. Is that correct? And the E-rate, we saved a little bit through E-rate because I think E-rate took Blackboard. And so as a result of that, we saved a little bit of money. But, so the available funding piece is 1.3 million dollars. And that's the long and short of it. What we are focused on is what the school board identified much early on in this process, and that's compensation and staffing. Those are the two biggies that we needed to address and that we identified as goals for this current budget, or next year's budget. And I think, as you'll see, we've done a pretty good job addressing most of those pieces. Next slide. And so we laid it out for you. These are, first line, FY 2015, but we just sort of recaptured, encapsulated, and when I say we, I mean Marcy, encapsulated those pieces that were part of our goals as identified by the school board and senior staff. And the things that are crossed out in that first column, those are the things we didn't quite reach our goal, or we did a little bit better. For example, on the bottom, bottom left-hand corner column there, it says health insurance increased to 5 percent. We're actually going to be passing on no increase to employees, so employees will see no increase to their healthcare benefits. And then as far as classified staff, we had, we were hoping to add 2 percent to, 2 percent in compensation for classified staff. What we're proposing tonight is actually a 1 percent, so we didn't, weren't quite able to reach that goal. Career ladders not addressed, 2 percent for administration. We're actually going to be proposing tonight a $500 across the board increase for each administrator in the school division. And ancillary, we did address issues with the ancillary scale, as you're aware, but again, we're not going to make as much impact on fixing that scale as we had hoped because of funding, but we're going to make some progress. And then the same thing with, I'm not sure why I'm going from bottom to top, but that's what I'm doing. And then at the top, teachers, we had requested 2.1 percent across the board, 2.2 actually, and we're going to be somewhere around 1.5 percent if my recommendation is approved. So again, we may, we're going to, we're going to be able to make some significant progress, which is a really good thing. And so I'm excited about that. As much as we had hoped, no, but excited about the fact that we made some progress and as Ms. Wolf said, we had, I think, some really positive communication with the Board of Supervisors, some really good meetings. I think both sides were listening and doing everything they could to help the school division. And so me personally, I'm very pleased with that. And, you know, looking, look forward to moving forward and working with them in the future. So I think it was a pretty good process. Oh, and I need to mention biweekly pay. Almost forgot. As part of the budget proposal, budget process, and we shared this now with, I've shared it with ACES, my teacher advisory group, we've also shared it with school support council and with administration. And I know HR is working on a FAQ document to share with all staff about biweekly pay, what it will look like, 26 pay periods with a one-week lag, which is a little bit better than I guess what was proposed last year before my time. I had a two-week lag. We were able to work that down to a one-week lag. And so that's a reality, we'll be going to biweekly pay. Some folks will be able to opt out, namely teachers and administrators will be able to opt out, but the rest, including new, brand-new teachers, will be on biweekly pay.
And they will be opting out.
Teachers can opt out. Administrators can opt out. Brand-new teachers cannot opt out.
Right.
They will automatically be on biweekly pay, as is with the rest of classified staff.
And administrators also, new administrators are...
Administrators will be able to opt out as well. So this is sort of a visual presentation or representation of the adjustments to the scale, and it's a little bit hard to see, but it's there, I promise. There is a little bit of improvement. You can see the compression in the FY '14 scale between years three and about 13, and we were able to flatten that out in the proposed scale. There's some flattening that takes place within those same years. And again, it's incremental progress. You know, we weren't able to make as much as we had hoped, we made a little bit. We have a five-to-six-year plan to completely address this and make this equitable for all teachers, and we're moving in that direction, so that's a positive thing. Did we get everything we wanted? No. But we're certainly moving in that direction. I also wanted to point out that we extended the BA plus 15 line. You can see it there in the blue. Under FY '14, it's the bottom line, it stops right at year 15.
Red line. It's the red line.
The red line.
The red line.
Well, we were able to extend both of them. And that's something FEI had actually requested, they were very concerned about. So they're back on scale, so up to, up to 30 years. That was, that's, again, that's good progress. Wasn't terribly expensive, but it's something we needed to do, and we've done it. All right, next. And ancillary scale. You can see, and this is, you can see where the compression is on the blue line, FY '14, we're able to alleviate some of that compression. And you see where the little notch is there on the red on FY '15? We don't have anybody there. There's only a few people on this scale. Okay, so we don't have anyone in that part of the scale.
In that dip.
So it's actually even a little bit better than it appears here. It's a little flatter, but we have to be, you know, be fair in terms of the scale. But we don't have anyone there. So it's actually a little bit flatter than that. And, okay, the unified pay scale, this is essentially, you've heard a little bit about this, taking four different pay scales, creating one unified pay scale. And these are the, all the different categories of employees that would fit within that scale with a mid, mid, and max representation. Gives us a lot of flexibility, a great deal of flexibility when we're hiring folks, and it simplifies things greatly. So again, four scales down into one scale. And I feel like I'm missing something there, Marcy. It's okay. Did I miss anything there? Great, let's move on. Oh, I'm sorry. But any questions on any of that?
No.
All right, so just to recap, administered, for interest of cost, addressing the administrator's piece, $500 per, it's $40,000. We did add five different supplements. The three most notable are right there, test coordinators, elementary chairs, and science fair coordinator. To recap, there's no employee rate insurance increase, excuse me, no employee rate increase for health benefits. We had projected about a 5 percent. There will be none, which is great news for our folks, our employees. And then we are adding a consumer-driven healthcare plan, HSA. The consumer-driven plan, as you know, is just, it's a part of the glide path into what's coming from the Affordable Healthcare Act. It's sort of the direction that we need to go in anyway. We are, as you know, as you heard tonight, very interested in incentivizing the plan because it's an extremely inexpensive plan, but it has a high deductible. So our feeling is that if we can incentivize folks to join, sign up for this particular plan, incentivize it with some money, more folks will sign up for it, which would be, you know, it's good for the school division and potentially it's good for employees because it would be the lowest plan, not the lowest plan. A single subscriber would pay nothing for his healthcare each month. And plus, they would be, have a little bit of money added to their HSA, which, you know, is good for young, strapping, I don't feel that young anymore, but formerly young, strapping superintendents, but anyway. So anyway, that's a little bit about the consumer-driven plan, but more than anything, I think it's, it's good to have this because even if people don't take it, perhaps they can learn more about it, understand the process a little better, and know that this is, this is the direction that we're not only going as a school division, but as a country. So it's important to have that there.
About that, though, is there any plan to have little seminars about it? Because it is a complex, new way of thinking about healthcare that does have some tremendous advantages, like you're talking about. So you are. That'd be great. It'd be great.
And whether or not we incentivize it, we need to have that in place then before we go on and talk to folks, let them know what's going on. That piece of the puzzle needs to be set in place. All right, in terms of staffing, for about $500,000, which is roughly what we're, what we're taking or carving out of contingency, these are the different staffing positions that would be added. Again, they're all pieces that you've heard before. We did move computer technician up into this, into this category. It's a position that we need desperately. So all those positions, again, are things you've probably heard something about. I think the most notable probably is the first bullet, what we're going to be taking and ensuring that every elementary school has their own ITR, RT. That's a big deal. And something principals particularly are very excited about. And the adoption piece, as you well know, was scheduled for adoption on the 28th, there's a special meeting and work session. The Board of Supervisors has already adopted their budget. We do not have a state budget. What I know to this point is the Senate has adopted the governor's budget, which has a little bit more money for school divisions, has a little bit more money for Falkirk County Public Schools, but there is major...
House fighting.
In-house fighting between the two houses in the General Assembly. So we don't know when we're going to have a state budget, hopefully in time to procure and produce teacher contracts, contracts for all employees. But I can't say that definitively now. I don't know that we're going to have it, but I certainly hope that we do.
Excellent.
Any questions on any of that?
No.
There's a lot of information.
But I feel like it's a great budget that we got a lot accomplished. I think it's great. Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions, anybody? No, we're good? Okay. Action items.
I move that the school board approve the revisions to Policy 5-6.4 Grievances and Grievance Procedures for Teachers.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second that the school board approve the revisions to Policy 5-6 dot 4 Grievances and Grievance Procedures for Teachers. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. Okay. Do we have a motion?
A motion that the school board convenes a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering student discipline matters pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A, subsection 2.
And a second?
There's been a motion and a second that the school board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing and considering student discipline matters pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2 dot 2-3711A, parentheses 2. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no. The ayes have it. We're going to close session.